That one's for you right there. I don't think you need it plugged in, but I'm gonna just plug it in. Say good doing that.
Hi, Gail.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Gail.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good.
Good.
Yep. You can have seed enough fridge, but it's from.
Thanks.
It's already Olympic time though.
I'll do that thing again. Too busy making gyros.
There's only a million.
Good evening, folks.
Hey, Jay.
See Mickey there, Gail.
Bye, everyone.
So, Joe, you're counting those chickens, huh?
Yeah, well, I'm down the Cape, so I'm hoping for an early night. I wouldn't miss this meeting for the world.
And Chip's probably in Gloucester or Rockport.
I didn't hear from anybody about one not coming.
Looks like Mickey's changed his hairstyle.
Does anyone remember if he mentioned it last time, he wouldn't be here? Because I remember we talked about the dates.
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Well, we have a quorum, so. I see applicants, I see attorneys. Looks ready?
Yeah.
Getting everyone will call this meeting to order town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for June 28th, 2023. The roll call of members, item one. Jim McBane.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
I'm Lucy.
Yeah.
Greg.
Here.
Thank you. Mickey Feely.
Here.
Assumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Uh, looks like Chip Tarbell is currently not here. We will see if he joins later. And Chair Dave Hatfield is with you as well. All right, legal notice.
Yeah. All right, consistent with the governor's order, extend a certain provision of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 8243-9388-0219, pass code 269736. Please use only dial in our computer and not post as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request if you are a person with a disability. And require information on material in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator William Renault, Town Engineer at 7812466.
No, thank you, honey.
08 as far advanced of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements, remove an accessory barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, 23-91. S and C Realty Investments Company LLC, application for modification of signage. From prior zoning board of appeals decision and approvals. The property is shown as map 19, lot parcel 24 and 24 AAA of the assessors map and is located at 620 and 632 Main Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello.
So several items on our continued matters tonight, we've received correspondence and requests for, for um. Most of them to be continued. So as we always do, we will take those up front in case anyone is here specifically for them. From Attorney Brian McGrail, dated June 27th, 2023, regarding Kingland Block LLC at 369 to 371 Main Street. Case numbers 23 dash 14 through 17. Requesting that we continue the matter till our meeting on Ju- July 12th, 2023, and that they are still finalizing the town easement issue and draft conditions. We had another meet onsite meeting with William Renault, Town Engineer, in in this regard last week. There's already an extension in place through August 30th, so we're covered there.
I move we continue to July 12th.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Regular voting members and Greg, um, Tom.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous. That will be on our July 12th agenda. From Attorney Brian McGrail, June 27th, 2023, regarding New Creek LLC, 10 Broadway, Wakefield, Mass., case number is 23 dash 39 through 42. Requesting that we continue the matter to our July 12th, 2023 meeting, still in the process of working with Board Member James McBane to review cross sections with the project architect. We are also anticipating a memo from Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee soon. Uh, this hearing also has an extension in place through August 30th.
I move we continue to July 12th.
Seconded.
Any discussion on this motion? All right, same voting members, um, Tom.
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that too will be on our July 12th agenda. From Attorney Brian McGrail.
Dave, I got here.
Oh, welcome. Chip Tarbell, for the record, Chip is with us. Welcome. All right, um, next continued request from Brian, Brian McGrail, dated June 27th, 2023, regarding Granite's Family Trust LLC. 314, 330 and 336 Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers 23 dash 43 through 50. Requesting that we continue the matter to our July 12th, 2023 meeting. Still in the process of reviewing drainage with William Renault, the Town Engineer. This too has an extension in place through August 30th.
I move we continue to July 12th.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, regular voting members now with Chip on board, uh, Tom.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that too will be on our July 12th agenda. From Attorney Brian McGrail, dated June 27th, 2023, regarding Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC, 1 Autobahn Road, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers 23 dash 66 through 68. Requesting that we continue this matter till July 12th, 2023, and they're still in the process of compiling additional sign information and finalizing matters with the CONCOM. Our Conservation Commission, for the record. Um, this too also has an extension in place through August 30th.
Will we continue to July 12th?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Same voting members, Tom.
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Yes.
And I vote yes. From Attorney Brian McGrail, dated June 27th, 2023, A and E Realty Trust, 460 to 466 and 472 Main Street, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers 23 dash 70 through 72. Requesting that we continue the matter to July 12th, 2023 hearing, and they're still in a meeting. And that we had a meeting and site visit this week with William Renault, the Town Engineer, regarding coordination with Envision Wakefield. We also met with the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee last Friday, so perhaps we'll see some correspondence from them by that meeting. No extension in place for this. Um. So, we just need a motion to continue.
I move we continue to July 12th.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Same voting members, Tom.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And finally, uh, from Attorney Brian McGrail, June 27th, 2023, regarding Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC at 3 Melvin Street, case numbers 23 dash 77, 78 and 79. Requesting that we continue this matter to our meeting on August 16th, 2023, and that they're still in the process of working on items requested by the board, and our architect is overseas for an extended period of time. Current extension is on file through August 30th. Oh, and this letter, uh, confirms the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render a filed decision until September 30th, 2023. I was just thinking in my head, Brian, that we probably have to extend this, and you did it. So this is a motion to continue and extend.
Yeah, I make the motion, we continue to August 16th and extend the deadline to accept the applicant's, um, request to extend to September 30th.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Regular voting members, uh, Tom.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that will be on our August 16th agenda. Okay, um.
Dave, can I just make one quick comment?
Sure can.
I really appreciate that all these meetings have been, um, continued. Because what traditionally happens when you come back and you know, we've got two window changes and they just want to show us that they're working on it. Is kind of a waste of time, so if it, if there's not meaningful stuff to go over. It is just kind of a waste, so I do appreciate, uh, the fact that these are getting continued, and even though it sounds like we have a lot. I I know with vacations and everything else, you know, there may be equal amount of people continuing next time, but again, I'm appreciative that that. I don't want to say wasting the board's time, but all of these are kind of at a point where they need substantive information, so if you don't have it. Uh, I think it's great to just keep moving. That was all, just kind of an aside.
Okay, no, I would tend to agree, and again, as long as each applicant is willing to extend the time for us to render a decision, and we mutually agree that progress is being made, then, uh, you know, I'm fine too. As long as progress is being made, which it sounds like it is, so.
Um. Chair, may I just quickly, just to confirm that, the progress is being made on all these, and a lot of it's at the administrative level at this point, TAC. Peer reviewed traffic consultant, and we're at a stage of the year where vacations and holidays, especially the Fourth of July, the town engineer is off all this week as he deserves, they're always very responsive. Incredibly responsive, uh, but then our consultant goes on vacation, so, um, there might, there might be more continuances on the, on, um. On the, uh, July meeting because we've got the holiday coming up next week, so there's not going to be a lot of time to get stuff in by Friday, but we'll do our best, and there is progress being made. Uh, but just not to the extent to have enough ready to come back and take the board's time with it, so.
I appreciate the understanding on that. All right, thank you. So, um, so that leaves one continued hearing, a new hearing, and two other matters, Brian. Did you, um, did you still want to go with other matters first, or do you want to take the continued hearing?
Uh, continue hearing first, and then the other matters would be great.
Okay.
Because I see Dana is here and.
Okay.
Ready to go.
All right, so our. Continued hearing for the evening, 23 dash 51 Dana Rodriguez, at 377 Main Street.
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, representing Attorney Brian McGrail, representing Dana Rodriguez. Uh, this is the, um, uh, property at 377 Main Street, but has more of an impact of what's being presented on Albion Street. Uh, as you know, Dana owns the, uh, building, um, that has just been meticulously redone, uh, at 377 Main Street, and his desire is to. Um, put a sign on, um, the wall of the building that faces Albion Street. So we were here, we've been before the board a couple of times, uh, we went before the sign design review board, uh, as you may recall. Uh, they issued a memo recommending approval of the sign that we presented at the last meeting. Um, your board was not satisfied with that sign and asked us, they, I think you were satisfied as to, in essence, the size, location. Uh, but you asked us to go back and work on, you know, some more detail. I think you thought it was a little bit plain, um, flat, and and you wanted a little bit of a, um, little bit of a look by a professional sign company. Um, so we've had the opportunity to do that, and we would like to present that to you tonight to see if that is acceptable at this point, um, to the board. I think, uh, perhaps the appropriate place to start, uh, to refresh the board's memory, um, is to, um, uh, take a look at, um, the. Sign that was presented last time. So you have something to compare this to. So this is what was presented last time that the board was not, um. Uh, satisfied with, um, but just to kind of, and you basically said you thought it was plain and and, uh, didn't have any dimension to it, and, uh. So you asked us to go back, so, uh, to take note, the this sign length, uh, is 30 feet, 35 feet. Uh, and it's about two feet, uh, in dimension, um, from top to bottom. What is being proposed now with the changes? Is the following. This is 32 feet and it's 22 inches in high, so it's a little bit smaller, uh, than what was proposed. Um, it's black in color, it's got gold lettering. Um, the specs on that are, as you can see, one, one and a half inch HU panel carved. So it's carved, uh, with a bevel on all text in the border. Uh, background is painted in satin black, uh, and then all gold is, uh, shown gold is to be gilded with a 24 karat gold leaf. So this sign is carved, it has some dimension to it, uh, it's black in color, and, um. You know, pretty straightforward to present to your board and happy to take your feedback on it.
Okay. Board members, go ahead.
I'll start, I'll weigh in basically, very much better, thank you, um. The, uh, the only comments I would have on this, I don't, is the flourishes on either end are way too far away from the lettering, basically. It's almost like this should be shortened in either direction to give it more distinction because it's lost. The black against the gray or gray-blue, basically, the building really is sharp. It brings it, it sticks out. Um, Dana had said originally that he's all for basically doing something better and certainly has done something better here in my mind. But I would, I would either make the flourishes bigger, or in fact shrink the distance between the flourishes. And the, and the sign letters themselves, so that they become more part of the lettering and the sign itself, they they sort of like are afterthoughts in the way they appear on this thing. That's my comment.
Well, Jim, to, just to clarify, um, are you saying you'd keep the sign the same size and bring those, uh, designs in or?
No, no, I would shrink the length of the sign, basically, to bring things together more, more compactly or in and more. To have more a- effect on the lettering of the overall sign that they just hang out there, they're just too far away.
Anyone else?
Silence is golden.
I mean, I, I agree with Jim that there's too much black between the F and the asterisk. I don't know if we have enough dimensions to say. You know, take two feet off of the left and right and call it a day. I, I, I feel bad just coming back and back and back because I think we're right there. I, I just agree with Jim that the. The flourishes are the right size, it's just too much black between the F and the flourish and too much black between the R and the flourish. I don't know what that dimension is to say, take two feet off of each side, and that also would help reduce the length of the sign. Which I think is a little bit too long in contrast to the side, the size of the building.
I don't know what the distance is, but I would say if, if between the flourish and the R and the flourish and the F, if that distance was cut in half. It probably is closer to right. In that, in that sense, short of, short of the flourishes being stretched. Basically, that's where I'd go with it. I'd cut half of the, of the distance on either end. Whether that's a foot, two feet, a half an inch, whatever it is.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, I'll weigh in. Uh, we asked him to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better sign. He did, and it's smaller than what was there before. I have no problem with this sign. If he wants to do it, I just don't know how far we want to go, telling him to move things around and make it even smaller. He already made it smaller. In my mind, I'm fine with this sign. I think it looks nicer and it's fine, in my mind. So there's my opinion. Um, he did what we asked him to do, and I don't really want to send him back to do it again.
No, I, Dave, I don't either. I just think we could make decisions and approve it if he would accept. What we wanted to do. I don't want to see it again. I just want it to be a little shorter, that's all.
I, I like the way it is today.
I mean, he already made it three feet shorter, that's my point, so I. What's, what's allowed on the facade, Jim? I mean, is it like two thirds the width of this building? I mean, is it at least?
15 square feet is allowed.
No, I know, but this frontage is huge, so.
It is, it doesn't, it doesn't, the sign doesn't match what the frontage is or could be. And it's, it's basically, the sign can be, the length of the sign doesn't want to be more than two thirds the length of the building.
Which I think this is.
Yeah. Yeah, if you slid it all one way or the other, it's probably like half the building, just. But, okay, I mean, again, uh, so Brian, you've heard some feedback. I don't know if, if Mr. Rodriguez wants to weigh in and.
Yeah, I think, uh, I can't speak for Dana on this. Dana, you're muted, so if you could unmute and.
Sorry, I, I was talking, I was wondering, uh. Wonder why nobody was answering. So, the sign, the sign, um, I was hoping to get the, expand the letters. I, I think the letter is a little too close for me. On, 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 on the, on the, uh, financial center, so I was going to try to work with the designer to spread them out a little bit. And, you know, because I, I don't like that space either. I think that's a little, um, you know, a, a little more than what I want to see as far as the black, so. Uh, uh, you know, we, we were working with trying to space out the letters. And, you know, keep that, the scroll on the end. Uh, and if that involves taking a little bit off of the sign, I, you know, I, I, and I'll do that. I, 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 I do want to have the look of the financial center. And the letters nice and clear for somebody to see, um. And if, you know, if, if I get to the point where, you know, at some point, those letters, if I try to do that, the letters are going to be too, too big, and I'm not going to like that look. So if I could just get the look, um, with spacing out the letters a little bit, and if that involves taking some of the, you know, taking a little bit off. So that I don't have the black, I, I don't particularly like the black either, I, I, it's, uh, you know, not that I don't like the black, I like the black color. I just don't like the black space between the beginning letter and the, and the ending letter to the scrolls on the side.
So, so let me make a suggestion here, all right, since you opened a different window. And maybe we can come to conclusion here, which we shouldn't dwell on this any longer. So if you were to stretch the letters, the spacing of the letters, I'm not stretching the letters as much as stretch the spacing, because I think. The height of the letters are fine in my mind, but if those, if the F and the R. Could be stretched between half what, half distance, as I indicated really about shortcutting it.
Okay.
The R comes over, the R ends half the distance of the space between the flourish. And the R now move it basically to half that distance and do the same on the F end. Uh, of that, then it would stretch the letters out, give it more space and, and basically dissipate the, the, the black, which neither one of us like.
Right. Right.
I would be fine with that, and if we can, if we can pose that as a decision, I think that would solve both our problems.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Can I just make a quick observation, and it has nothing to do with the actual sign, it's. You know, I understand Dave and Chip wanting to get it done tonight, but it sounds like Dana had some work to do anyways, and rather than us saying, oh, you know. If we do this, it might do this. If we do this, it might do that. It sounded like he had work to do anyways, and.
No, I, I, I don't.
I mean, you, you said, you know, you were going to try to stretch the letters out. We don't really. If we don't know what we're approving, I don't understand, I don't know why it's not like any other project. If it was, you know, something simple. That was, you know, if you, you know, you, you strictly do X, remove one foot, I don't know if that's number, but something like that, and that would make sense, but if we don't know what it's going to look like. And, and even the applicant stated right here tonight that he doesn't like the way it looks right now, and it's going to have to change it somewhat, then I don't see any problem in having him come back, so we know what we're getting, that we talk about that all the time in every project. And he himself said he doesn't even like this.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm with you, Greg. And the next time could literally be, here's what I came up with, and yep, we're good, and vote on it. And we were telling him that we like what he's trying to do, just do what you say you're going to do.
A- a- and I would agree with, with ending it if it was something concrete, like remove one foot here, but it, it seems very wishy-washy to, to just say. We're good with this. If you do, maybe you pull this here, or maybe you do that.
I would agree with you. I was trying to figure out how to word it, so it wasn't wishy-washing, and wasn't one, wasn't coming up with anything.
Okay, so Dana, Brian, you willing?
Yeah, so Dana, I mean, so Dana, you know, it's, it's, uh, the board meets in two weeks. I mean, so, you know, if you want to do that, um. You know, it's, um.
A- a- and I mean, the option is, the other option is to, to do something concrete here. I mean, applicant himself said he didn't really like this and might look for something else. That's the reason.
No, Greg, I'm not looking for anything else. All I'm looking for is to open the, the letters up. And come, you know, I'll, I'll have a minimal, a, a reduction in the black space, which is the problem now that. And come, you know, I'll, I'll have a minimal, a, a reduction in the black space, which is the problem now that the board is having between my letters. The beginning letter and the scrolls, so I, I can make that, if you have a special, you, you know, do you want to see that to be a foot? Between the, the, the R and the scroll and between the scroll and the F, I'll make it a foot, right, you, so you tell me what you want. It's just, you know, you've asked me for one thing, I came through, I, I made it even smaller. We did that and, and, you know, so I'm trying to make it a little bit aesthetic for the eyes. But, you, you know, you're saying this, you know, it's a whole different sign, it's really not a different sign. It's the same, it's the same carved lettering. Gold leaf lettering. Dressed it up quite a bit and, and meanwhile, you know, we're talking about the black space and I'm saying I'm going to reduce that black space when I open up the, the, the letters a little bit longer.
Be completely clear, I never said it was a different sign, no one seems to be fixated, normally when we approve something, if we condition it, and I think. Not going to speak for him, but everyone else on the board would agree, when we condition something based on one thing, it's very concrete. One second, it's not. Well, I would like to space out the letters, I don't know how much I'm going to space out the letters or how much of that, like, it's something very concrete, this is in two weeks. There was, I think, a few continuances on this earlier. I, I don't understand what two weeks is, 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 is going to do if you're going to have to redesign it anyways.
Because if, if you just tell me what you want, I'll, I'll, I'll do it exactly the way you want it, if you say you want a foot. From the, the R to the scroll and from the scroll to the F, I'll make it a foot.
Dana, we're saying is we want you to present us something you are happy with. And that you want to put up on the side of your building, you yourself. Said you weren't happy with this design, that you wanted to change it a little bit, that's what Greg is saying.
I, I understand that, but it's basically, that, that's maybe five percent of the overall sign. Whereas I get ninety-five percent just the way we want it, but whatever, you guys.
And we approve one hundred percent of every project.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I, I, everyone, I'm, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm with Greg, I, I think if you. You know, how, how are you going to space the, in order to get an extra foot off the black, you have the space, you'd have to space these things a lot. And it might not look great, so we'd just like to see it. Or just say to you, I don't mind the spacing right now, take a foot off each end, and I think that would fix it.
You don't even know what a foot is because there's no measurement, it's only one, one long measurement.
We, we don't know what the distance is to start with. Do you want to pass it off to me as a design issue basically to, to finalize? If you give me the authority and basically in concept? So.
Up to the applicant, it's up to the, if the applicant would like that to happen, we could certainly take that as a, as a motion, Joe.
If I, if I work with Jim just to go and, and say, okay, this is, you know, we'll do this, I, I'll have this, I'll have that done by Friday, really, I mean, it's. You know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not that. I can't see it being that big of a deal, so, you know, I just, I, I, I got a lot of things I'm working, I just want to get, get some things resolved. You know, if I can do that with Jim and, you know, I have no problem doing that with Jim and getting, you know, just say, hey, here's this look. I'm not going to make the sign look worse, that's for sure, I'm looking to, you know. Uh, uh, to, to clean the building up and do some nice stuff to the building and make it look nice, so. You, you know, I'm certainly not going to have, you know, put something there that's not, I, I can't imagine you guys are, are not going to like it. That's all, so.
Okay, Dana, Dana, if I can, you're there, you're ninety-five percent there. The board just asked you to consider the black, you said you'd consider the black, that's all we need to do, and if, if you're willing to work with Jim.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jim's happy to do it, you, I'm sure you'll come up with something in short order because it isn't a, it isn't a tall task.
Yeah.
And we just continue to July twelfth, and really, I wouldn't expect this conversation to last more than a minute. And it does, there's a problem.
Alright.
And, and it's done, I, I can almost guarantee, I can't guarantee anything, but. If, if, if Jim works with the offline, you come back July twelfth, this thing should be done in a minute.
Okay.
And you're off, and you're good to go, so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, that way we're not, if you work with Jim, we're not guessing and missing, and, uh, missing again, and then having this conversation on July twelfth.
Right, agreed. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, excellent. Um, okay. I'll open up the public testimony, if anyone remember the public has a comment or question, please raise your hand at this time in the Zoom meeting. Any no hands will close up the public testimony.
I move that we continue this hearing until July twelfth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Um, do we, uh, do we want to add to the motion that?
And that, and that Jim McBane. Work with offline to come up with something that can be presented to us.
Okay.
Second the amended motion.
Thank you, any discussion on the amended motion? Our regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, alright, thanks for the updates tonight, and we'll, um, we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Happy fourth.
Dana, I'm, I'm available all of Friday, just let me know when.
Alright Jim, I'll, um, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll give you a call Friday, Friday morning probably.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, appreciate it.
Moving on to new hearings, twenty-three dash ninety-one, oh Brian, sorry, did you want to do your other matters?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Oh, alright, because then you're done, right, and the other one, Michael, right? So appreciate the patience, Michael, like that, so we'll move on to the other matters. There's two of them, three sixty-one Salem Street, a pre-op meeting.
Great, um, thank you, I, I'm here on behalf of the owner, um. Of three sixty-one Salem Street, Ryan Barry is here on behalf of the ownership group. Um, and I'm going to bring up a plan. This is a pre-application meeting for this, um, it's a pretty straightforward project, three sixty-one Salem is, if you're heading. Um, towards Linfield, um, and you go past the wildflowers and you go kind of past. Galeni, it's on the left-hand side backing up to Route. Um, to, to the, um, uh, kind of the one twenty-eight side of Salem Street, if you will, heading into Linfield. Uh, currently is a, 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 um, single family dwelling. That's not in great shape, that Ryan has applied for a demolition permit, it's going to be raised. And there is going to be, um, uh, the proposal is to construct a two-family dwelling on the property. Um, the property is somewhat unique, um, it has a split zoning line. If you follow my cursor, um, on the inside or the bottom of my cursor is business. And as I come down, the left-hand side is business. The back area is single residence.
Brian, I'm not seeing it, am I the only one that doesn't see it?
Oh, thank you.
I, we were seeing it, I was seeing it.
Oh, that, to come out now?
Yep.
That better?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so, so, um, basically, uh, again, let me, let me talk about the lot, so the lot is on Salem Street. As you follow my cursor, it's a split zone lot, so below my cursor is business district. As I come down on the left-hand side is business district, so in essence, this box is business. The rest is single residence. Uh, under our bylaw, we're able to extend the business district line by thirty feet. Which takes it out to here, all the way out. So, uh, and by the way, I forgot to do, John O'Grady is also here tonight on behalf of his engineering, if, if, if there's questions that arise from him. Um, so what's being proposed is, is an application to demolish this building. Um, and to reconstruct a, a two-family dwelling, two-family dwellings are allowed by right. Uh, in the business district, and, and so what we're proposing. Is a two-family dwelling, uh, and it will be entirely within the designated and extended business district. Um, so, um, that's what we're proposing, the reason we're here tonight, we wanted a pre-application meeting. Is that we anticipate, um, that because of where we want to locate the parking. Uh, to save some of the green space on the lot. Um, that we might need some special permit relief, which will bring us into a site plan approval process with your board. Because it's a provision in our bylaw that says, um, uh, that, um, anything with a special permit requires site plan approval. So, the, the purpose of being here is to, there's no formal application filed yet, there will be. That, um, in the event we are in a special permit process, which we think we will be, we kind of want to know what the board would like to see on. The site plan for a two-family dwelling, which is somewhat unique for the board, you really don't have, um. Site plan review when you have two-family houses being built. Um, so, and, and that's why, you know, that, that's the exact purpose of our bylaw, to have a pre-application meeting. Uh, to get the board's feedback on what you would like to see, we're not asking for a waiver, I mean, in essence, we already have a pretty good site plan here. Um, this is a proposed building footprint. Um, that, um, we'd be within that footprint. Um, we really at this point don't want to commit to an architectural design. Um, because, you know, it's a two-family dwelling, that could change, so we really, we'd rather not present architectural drawings, but we're, you know, the board's okay with that, but we're happy to present. Um, whatever else, uh, the board might want to see as part of the site plan.
Board members?
Brian, can you push this back anymore?
I guess why I have John here, John?
We're a little bit restricted in the sense that. We are able to extend that zone line thirty feet.
Yep.
But there is a provision where, um, the business butts up against residential. You can't, you essentially can't have a structure within fifteen feet. Of that thirty foot, so. You know, I, I could maybe slide it back a couple of feet, but not, not very far, because we end up. Within that, you know, within fifteen feet of that.
Stop pushing it here, John.
Hmm?
You're going to stop pushing it here when you go back.
Yeah, it's, we start to get very close to the fifteen feet.
But the, but the shape of this basically is a square rectangle. It could, it could on the left side though. Uh, be the slipback or the, the layout. Uh, of the architecture basically could take advantage at least on that side. Of being pushed back to some degree.
Yeah, they could step it back or.
I'm just thinking more greenery and to provide more greenery to the front of the building. I understand the desire to get some greenery, keep greenery at the back, but. I'm wondering whether we got a little too much asphalt at the front, now, ha- having said that. The businesses are there, basically as a commercial and have a lot of asphalt too, so. I guess it would, it comes to boat in the overall design, so I, I'd want to see a little bit of. Either reshaping of the building or slipping of the building, I guess.
We can look at that, Jim, to, to push it back, we can, we can take a look.
And Brian, wouldn't the situation be that you're under special permit, so you'd be. Whether you needed a variance or not, uh, encroach upon that would be up to us, right?
Yeah, we, we really don't want to be in a, you know, we never want to be in a position of, uh, applying for a variance if we don't need it. Um, you know, so what, I think what we're going to look at is, is try to accommodate Jim's request by maybe reshaping this. Or, or tweaking it to be able to accomplish that and, and stay out of the variance requirement.
Right, what I'm, what I'm looking at is trees that can be saved and. I don't know the lot well enough, but there are two big trees out front. One of which looks like it gets taken down because of the shape of the driveway. Um, I'd be curious if either of those trees can be saved or if it's worth it to save it. And what else might be on the site that's worth, you know, even up against one twenty-eight, you know. Is there the lineage to untouched area? So that's what I would be looking for.
You'd like to see what, you'd like to kind of see more like existing landscape conditions.
Yeah, like what, what's going to be, you know, what's the site? What's the site going to be and what's disturbed and what's not disturbed and that type of thing.
Yeah. Brian, Mike Feely, um, is there a reason it's not parallel to the street? Um, I can, again, John, you want to, um, touch on that?
Yeah, again. That fifteen feet off the thirty feet really restricts us, if I. You know, I might be able to get away with rotating a little bit, but once I get to a certain point, I end up having to shorten the length of the building and, um. We're not quite getting the square footage that we're looking for, and as far as the building footprint.
Well, we can look at it.
I'm just saying, if, if the extended business district goes fifteen, you, you have to, you have to have the fifteen foot buffer. Maybe you could do something. It just looks off kilter with the other buildings, right?
Yeah, understand, Mike.
Brian, what's that left, um, setback, is that right, is that like a couple of feet off the property line?
Uh, five feet.
What, what is it, is it allowed zero?
Zero, business district, yep.
Are you going to put a fence up on there, on that left side to separate the lot, or have you any thought on that?
That's why we're here, so you, you kind of want to see what screening is going to be over there, Joe.
Yeah, please.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, again, if, if the building can be shifted, moved a little. Create a little more distance, but yeah, I think some things needs to happen on that left side, if you, even if the. Setback in a business is zero, it's still pretty close, especially if the building doesn't move much. So there should be something there that I think we should see, yeah.
Good. Point well taken.
Mm-hmm. And landscaping, I mean, if. You know, part of the.
I got a, I got a note on that to talk, to, yeah, to, not, not just. What could be proposed?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else, board members?
Was, and I guess we can do it by, by just going and look, but, uh. Contours, you know, is this as flat as it looks? Or is there, are there hills, or are the contours accurate, all that information? And what are, but, or what are they?
Yeah, what, what you're seeing on there, we did do, um, you know, on the ground. Survey of the property, um, the front of the lot is about ninety, elevation ninety-eight. It goes. It goes up a little bit to ninety-nine and it goes ninety-eight and then it goes back up to ninety-nine, so it's, it's, it's fairly flat.
Yeah.
There it is, right there, Chip.
Yeah.
More of the existing conditions playing the tune, dude.
Are those existing structures going to stick around or are those gone?
Gone. Right, Ryan, just to confirm.
Yes, garage will be gone.
Yeah.
Building will be gone for sure.
So what's on the lot on the right, Brian, and what's on the lot on the left, is that two houses on the right and the business on the left?
This is a, this is kind of a business, um, mixed use, there's a, there's a residential component here in a business use. Next door.
Is that their garage out back?
Yeah, and that, yep, garage, yep.
Okay, yeah.
Been on the left side, Brian, that's, that's another, that, that structure.
Hang on a second, Joe.
The realty, a realty company or something?
What's that?
Was it, was, was the question was on the left side?
Yeah.
It's that print graphics in the parking lots in the back.
Okay. Alright, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, um. This is what's next door.
Yep.
And that's what's there now. And this is, this is the business next door. It's kind of surrounded, it's got the, uh. Galeni paving and the Sonic Temple on the outside of the street.
Alright, did you get kind of what you needed, Brian?
Yeah, we did, we did, and, and you're okay.
Moral will come out when you apply, of course, there'll be.
So you're okay without, with no architectural aspect at this point?
As part of the pre-op, or when we get to the, we, we get to the application, because we weren't, we, we were, uh. We were, uh, focusing on the site and the site plan more than, you know, because. My client is not, you know, committed to what, you know, they're going to live with a footprint. Uh, but they, they're not committed to what they want to do architecturally at this point.
Hmm.
To see something architecturally.
Yeah, we almost always see something architecturally. Um, not, again, we don't do a lot of two families, but for just about any residential application, even accessory apartments. We see something, so.
There's a lot of bad that can fit into that box.
Including just a box of a house that is completely uninteresting.
A special permit.
I think we'd want to see something, some, some vision of what you're thinking.
Some examples perhaps?
We can provide a rendering, I think. We could provide a rendering, I think.
Good. Yeah, as Chip, Chip, do you want to put out your famous quote or should? We want to avoid the situation. We will see what ends up happening and they go, how the hell did that get built?
Correct. Who allowed that?
Who allowed that? So.
I guess my question, it's a side-by-side two-family, right? Not a top and bottom?
Yes.
Know that yet.
Side-by-side would be ideal.
Okay.
All right. All right, well. Good start.
That's all we needed, just what we.
So we'll probably see in the fall.
Yeah, we didn't want to swing and miss on the application, so thank you.
All right. All right. So we're all set there, Brian?
Yeah.
All right, the other, other matter is two hundred to four hundred Quanapaw Parkway modification and or extension of special permit.
Great, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. This has, uh, become somewhat of a common request, uh, for you. I'm here on behalf of. Uh, Quanapawet, uh. Parkway, uh, two hundred dash four hundred Quanapaw Parkway. Um, and, um. As you mentioned, uh, the, the request is by CCF Quanapaw Property Company LLC, the current owner of the property. Um, and, um, we're here to, um, ask the board. Um, to find good cause, um, for a non-commencement of construction within the. One-year period required of our bylaw and to confirm, uh, an extension to commence construction. Um, our, our bylaw, uh, as you're aware, is very limiting, um, as far as timeframes for special permits. Um, state law allows a local bylaw to specify. That construction under a special permit has to commence with e- in either one, two, or three years. Uh, most of the towns that I practice in besides Wakefield always are at two or three years. Wakefield is at one year. Uh, which is really quick for a lot of, uh, special permit projects. Um, especially of this scope and nature, um, because, uh, you know, demolition doesn't qualify. You actually have to. Um, have, uh, construction commenced. So because of, of the significant. Uh, demolition and, and, and site preparation work. Uh, for this project, um, we're, we're specifically asking the board. Um, to, to find, um, that good cause exists for a delay in the commencement of construction authorized by the special permits. Um. Um, because of the extensive pre-construction work. Uh, including abatement of environmental conditions, a cha- as you know, a challenging, difficult demolition process, uh, process. Of a large existing building and in all other necessary site preparation prior to commencement of construction. And again, this is all occurring in a very environmentally sensitive area along the shores of Lake Quanapawet and adjacent to a recreational public walking path. So, you know, you yourself have spent the time with this reviewing the. The construction management plan that has to be implemented and approving that, so I think your board is very familiar with. Um, you know, what, what's going into this project prior to commencement of construction. So we would like you to recognize the good cause and the, and the reasons that I just men- mentioned. And to, uh, vote to, to, uh, confirm that based on the good cause. Uh, the board would extend the time to commence construction under the special permit until August twelfth, two thousand, uh, twenty, um, twenty-four.
What was the original deadline, Brian?
Um, it was, uh, August, uh, twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Cause we approved last July, right? It wasn't.
Yep, you voted on it July thirteenth and it was clocked in with the town clerk on August twelfth.
Okay. So what actually, where, where is the project right now? Cause it sounded like in the spring. This was gonna get started, fences were going up and the demo was gonna start in the spring and we're already at the end of June. So what, what seems to have been holding this up? Where are we today?
They're, they're staging and getting ready to do that. They're also, um, working in, uh, details with the town engineering department. On utility, um, disconnections and coordinating that. Um, they're in the process of coordinating their financial contributions to the town. Uh, because those are required under your, under your special permit. So, um, they're in the process of doing that as well. So they are, they are moving in post-taste. They, uh, they want to get going faster than anybody.
Okay.
And they're doing abatement right now on, you know, the asbestos and stuff like that. That all has to happen inside the building before demolition can occur.
So, so the interesting part is that demolition and abatement don't start, don't. Count as starting of construction, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so. I mean, to me, they've started because of the abatement and stuff, Dave, but. I get that technically they haven't because it's not, we're not constructing yet. We're just destructing.
Yeah, no, it just sounded, I, I just, again, a few months ago, it sounded like it was gonna be imminent. Abatement then demo like in the spring. And expected to see fences up and, and really more progress. So I didn't know if it was hung up in the building department. Or with engineering or financing, or I was just curious, kind of. It sounded like things were ready to move a few months ago. And it, um, I, I mean, I'm glad to hear at least abatement is going on. I've, I've just wondered what, what actually was going on. Um. You know, I don't, I don't have a huge problem with it, I just. You know, we all wanted to see the project get going. Um, and once demo is. Started, is that still expected to be a four, four to six month process?
Oh, yeah.
Estimate.
Yeah.
So, Dave, I, I agree with everything you just said, so I'm, I'm just curious, why another full year?
Well, I mean, I think, Tom, you know, they want to be safe, you know, really. You know, that in, you know, it's standard, I mean. I mean, you know, I, I think for a project of this size in, in all the work that needs to happen, they don't know what they're gonna run into with demo. You know, once they get into that building. In the, in the site preparation.
So the demo could take them the end of the year, right? If they actually start. In the next couple of months and they take four months, it's the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
And.
You got weather, you, you know, so this. And, and you know what's funny? You know, you, 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 you read the cases on, on special permits. They, they're very, it's very vague. Very vague, um, on commencement of construction. You know, a case just came down, uh, an appeals court slips decision that was, you know. Talked about financial, um, financial commitments are enough, but. You know, there, there's yet for someone to say what actually is, you know, commencement. Uh, but there are cases that say site preparation is not enough.
You actually have to build a building permit.
Yeah, and, and with variances, there's cases that say the, the issuance of the bill, their, uh, building permit. Um, is exercise of the, of the bill, of the variance. But so one might say, well, okay, that carries over to special permits as well, but there's not a case that says that on special permits.
And when you say financial commitments, it's not like the paying of the town. It's undertaking a financial commitment, right? Like, uh, and you know, to continue to exercise the permit.
Yeah, and the paying of the town might do it, Greg. I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it would be more like.
I just mean the facts of that case, right? It was like, uh, I forget exactly what it was. I saw it too, they.
Yeah, I forget what they financial, they made some type of financial.
Yeah, that would have led to an exercise of the permit or something to make. Yeah.
So you're aware of this issue, Greg, you know, the kind of the vagueness in it, and that's what's.
I think we, we talked about it before, uh, in another project, I thought.
Yeah.
You don't remember what it would have been, but.
I mean, that's why, that's why they just want to get ahead of this, um, because, um. You know, because they got fini-, you know, they got financing on this project and, and, and they looked at with a fine-toothed comb, so.
So if we did, like, if we did six-month board members, again, that takes them to the end. That's why I was kind of timing it out. They get to the end of the year and what, what if they find something and now they really can't get the building permit started at the end of the year? Now we're into the. First part of next year, so you go nine months, now you're in the spring. So, you know, when you, when you weigh it out, like, the year could very well, you know, I'd hope they'd start sooner than that. But until they actually demo the build site and see what's going on, and then you get into winter months and any limitations there.
Um. So does it even make sense, Dave, with that? Concern that even Brian brought up to say, yeah, okay, maybe you get. A year or whatever, but come back to us at least with an update in six months, even if it is a five-minute, hey, we didn't find anything or, or, or just even just an email, like. Oh, well, Greg, that's why I, I brought up the issue of the full year. We, we all want to see the project get going. I'm sure they do too. I want to put some incentive in there.
Yeah.
You know, for them to move. Um. I don't, two years from. Granting the permit to actual start of construction seems like a long time to me. You know, I, I, my employer, we've had huge projects with huge demo. That's a long time. That's a real long time, so I, I. I'm just saying, we all want to see it move forward. I, the reason I would think we would want to shorten up the year is to show them, to send them a signal that we want to see them. Move in post-haze. And force them to come back to see us, you know, if something happens, I don't think anyone here is gonna want to tell them they can't go forward, but good to know.
Well, I mean, if you want us to come back in six months, we'll be here. Uh, we'll be here before that. We'll be here whenever you want. Um, this is gonna be an ongoing project. Uh, that's important to everybody, so, um. You know, they certainly, um, want to accommodate the board and keep the board informed, so, you know, we're happy to come back in six months. Brian, I would just respectfully request a one year because, you know, there's huge financing components to this project. It's a multi-million dollar project.
Well, bottom, bottom line, if you. In order to get going by August, you would have to demo it and get it all done by August, which you're not gonna do, so we need to give you. Um. There's a lot of interest rate risk that a lot of projects are dealing with right now that it probably has an impact as well that. You know, it, it isn't really on our plate, but, um. Sure, it's an issue in this one. Um. Why can't, um, we just make it six months and, and have them come back and give us at least a little update?
You mean to February, August to February and then say?
Where are we? Why can't we be? At least to.
Yeah, my only concern with that is I know this year is important to them and, and I think it goes beyond the reality of what they're gonna do, but. You know, they've got, they've got loan commitments and, and, you know, to go back to the financing entity and say. You know, okay, we've got six months and we're gonna start demo, you know, i- if you're the financing entity, you're gonna say, well, we have concerns, you're gonna make it, so we're about to invest a lot of money during this building down. Now, I know the board. The board, um, says they'll extend, but, you know, it just creates, it might create an issue, I don't know. Um, and I will say, you know, the board has extended, you know, for smaller projects for a year. Um, so, you know, I, I would respectfully ask that you consider the year. And then, you know, even, even in the extension to, you know, say that, you know, put it, put it almost as a condition that. The board recognizes we'll extend it and the board is requiring the applicant to come back within six months to give an update. You know, that would be fine.
One note, though, Brian, I think most of those extensions that were a year for smaller projects were, at least recently, mostly COVID-related. It wasn't a. We got a lot to do and we have financing commitments.
True. True.
Yep. No, I, I hear your arguments, Brian. I, I, you know, again, we have done it before. This isn't that. Uh, you know, this request isn't that, uh. Extraordinary. Um, we just, I think we're all just a little anxious to see this one going. It's such a large project and it had, took a long time to get through. But, um.
They are too.
Potentially pushes, potentially pushes the back the finish date too, because they're already delayed getting started, really, so. Um, all right. I'm, I'm, I'm okay, board members. I'd, I'd, I'd rec- I'd accept the recommendation of a year and ask for an update in six months. Kind of where they are. I mean, we'll probably see activity on the site, but ha- have, ask them, them to come back at least with an update on where things stand and become an outlook. You know? Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess my question, my question is, is they come back and they give us an update, that's lovely. What happens if we don't like the update? You know, what happens if, oh, well, we need another six months because we're. Somewhat delayed because of X, Y, Z.
We don't give them the six months.
Yeah, but my, my question is, do we give them nine? Uh, whatever, I'm fine. I, I guess, they, they're good people. They've done a lot for the town, as long as they're getting. The stuff organized with the town, I, I can live. I, I just don't know what the, they update in six months does if we give them a year. Other than telling us where they're at, which is lovely.
Well, no, they hope to start within a year. They're just looking for that buffer, so.
Well, yeah, you know, they presented a construction. You know, they're, they're supposed to present a construction, uh, plan, which they did. That has dates to it. If that plan changes, they're supposed to come back to us too, so. There's numerous reasons that they should be coming back to us if they go too far off plan.
Well, that's part of it, Chip. You know, Brian, what unknown has happened? Since we approved it and they knew what they needed to do till now.
Interest rates.
Well, I, I, I don't know exactly, Tom, so I'm not gonna pretend. I can, I can tell you that. I- in, in the world of permitting, uh, in construction for projects like of this nature. Um, one year is not a lot of time to commence construction. And that's why the statute contemplates going up to three. Uh, and, and other cities and towns do, and in fact. You know, is in, in, in Joe Pride knows this, that our consultant. On the bylaw review committee on zoning is recommending three. And he's one of the most experienced, uh, permitting councils in the state, and he, and his change is says it absolutely needs to be, is a recommendation of three. So, so I think, you know, by extending the year, we're, we're kind of getting to the midpoint of what the statute allows and contemplates. Um.
Because it's a big. Six months gets you to the midpoint.
What's that?
By six months gets you to the midpoint, not by a year.
Well, it, it, what I mean by the midpoint is, I mean by it's, 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 you know, it's a happy medium between one and three, it's two.
I'm just, yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna be fine, I think, but I'm just. It's just curious to me that they put together the schedule, that nothing has changed from what, to your knowledge or ours, of what they're known. Um. Condition or anything else, so they put something out there to us. That said they were gonna perform in a certain way and they're not doing that. Now they're asking for a year. And there's no real explanation other than it's a big project. Well, we knew that and they knew that and. You know, I'm not sure. You know, if we're just not seeing something, but. You know, I think we all want to see it go forward. At least I do. We put a lot of work into it, so. Tom, you bring up another question for clarity. Brian, they did present a construction schedule. Do they need to, are they off that, that construction schedule and need to be asking for a minor modification?
Hang on, Greg, let me check that.
Because if they are and they haven't done it yet, then it would probably. Uh, bring it up twice tonight, makes sense to wait. Or, 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 I don't know if you need, you don't file an application for it, but. Get them done together. I don't know if you need to talk to your client about that, but.
Yeah. I'm gonna check, hold on a second. Know what they had, um, and the board might recall. I don't remember specifically if there was a. Um, construction schedule on this project. It might have been.
That, there was.
There's a phasing plan, I think.
It was, it wasn't as designed as there normally was, but there were some broad dates and debts given. Um, as to kind of phasing. I think it was more of a phasing schedule, Brian, than an actual. Construction schedule.
Yeah, I think that was more on the, that was part of probably the, uh, construction management plan that they.
Correct. Correct.
That they, that they recently, uh, presented. Um, but as far as I got the decision, I'm just kind of curious. Um.
Construction management plan, manager found it.
You got that, Dave?
Yeah, I talked about phasing. CMP final. It talked about phasing. But no dates. Right? I mean it. But I thought we. It was phased occupancy. I'm just looking at the files to just to.
Yeah.
Satisfy the question.
Yeah, I think, um.
So they talked about month twenty, yeah, there's a document, phase documents, see narrative. Month twenty, building one, month twenty-nine, month thirty-four, month thirty-seven. So that's like. Phasing the. Trucking route. This was from the, I think, the, uh. March meeting, April meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense, Dave.
Yeah, but no dates, board members. I mean, quickly, just put, trying to look at those recent, um, hearings we saw and what was presented.
The decision doesn't, the, uh, Greg, to answer your question, the decision doesn't have what would be contemplated as a construction schedule. That wasn't. Um. Part of the, the, part of this decision. I had the construction management plan, which required.
Yeah, I think that's what I was thinking of and I just couldn't remember for that day.
I just went back to the decision, uh. I just went back to the decision. Um, I also think, you know, and perhaps this might give the board some com- com- comfort. Um, Mr. McBane. I think can, um, inform the board that they, they, they have submitted their building permit plans, right, Jim? And you're in the process of reviewing those.
The building plans, the building plans for permit. As far as I'm concerned, comply at this moment, except in one case. With what's been approved. And that one case is the landscape materials have changed. Both in quantity, either reducing or adding or changing varieties. My understanding right now is that Matt, I think, didn't know that his. Landscape designers were changing this and he's in the process of straightening that out. But as far as the building plans and the elevations and the like, they're fine.
Yeah, and they, so I mean, I'm hoping that gives the board comfort that they've actually produced their building permit plans. Like have submitted them to the building department. I mean, Matt's goal, I know he stated to actually get the permit within a couple of weeks. So, and, and I think, uh, Tom, you know, from your business, um, the significant cost of that, uh, to have those plans made. Uh, that's not a small endeavor.
Okay. So Brian, again, the ask is to extend from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. April, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four? Did I get that right?
Not April, August to August.
August thirteenth to August thirteenth, okay.
Correct. That's what we respectfully request. With a, with the caveat on that, that you could put in the, in that. Extension that the board is requiring a status update within, uh, at, at, at the six-month point. Uh, if, uh, construction is not commenced by then, would that make sense?
Yes.
All right, board members, unless there's anything else. Chair would entertain a motion in that regard.
I move that we, uh, extend the special permit for conception and of construction to begin. August twelfth, twenty-four. With the caveat that they come back in six months to discuss where they're at. And to confirm that construction will start by that date if it has not started within six months.
Mr. Chief, I could just, uh, respectfully request a point of order that, uh, in extending that the board. Recognizes the, um, the good cause, uh, that I had stated earlier in my presentation, those items that, that, that's the. That's the, uh, impetus for, um, allowing this, that there is good cause, that construction has not commenced.
Truly noted.
So Chip, do you want to amend the motion in that regard?
Why that needs to be there, but that's okay.
No, it's a basis for doing the extension. So he just.
The thing with special permits is like nothing statutorily that says you can just extend them. There, there has to be good cause.
Okay.
You know.
Board, good cause.
Yeah.
Joe, you seconded that amended motion. Thank you. All right, regular voting members, any discussion on this amended motion? All right, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I go, yes, okay.
Appreciate the board's, uh, cooperation with this. Thank you very much.
All right, Brian. All right, thanks.
I will, I will convey, um, the comments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I will do that. Thank you.
All right, and, um. And, um, we'll work offline, get that letter drafted, get it clocked in. Can try to do that this week.
Yeah.
All right, that'd be great. All right, thank you. All right. All right, have a good fourth. Talk to you later, Brian. Um, okay, on to. Yep. Twenty-three dash ninety-one S and C Realty Investments Company LLC at six twenty and six thirty-two Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael McCarthy representing S and C Realty. Um, Sean Donovan from Viewpoint Signs has also joined the meeting. Um, and I'd like to just kind of highlight, uh, the purpose of the, uh, of the ask. And, uh, and to broad brush it and then to turn over to, um, Sean. Um, for a walkthrough on the details of the signs, but essentially, uh, what's, what's being requested. Is assistance in the rebranding of the signs. It's very similar, um, to what the board did in two thousand twenty-one with five eighteen Salem Street. Which is down by the Linfield Line. Uh, as the members are probably aware. Dunkin' Donuts is rebranded to just simply Dunkin'. And they're requiring their, uh, their franchises to rebrand accordingly, the, the, the signage. Um, so the proposal, uh, tonight. Is to modify the existing signs, essentially from Dunkin' Donuts to Dunkin'. Um, which actually, together with, um, there were two additional features though, that would be added to the, um, to the modification of the existing signs. One is on the northerly side of the building, which is the side toward Nahon Street. And between the two drive-up windows, there'd be the addition of a Wakefield runs on Dunkin'. It's the word Wakefield with a. Little symbol of a jogger and the word Dunkin'. That would be between the two drive-up windows. And then as with what was done at, um, five eighteen Salem Street, a clearance sign, uh, would be added. Um, on the southeast league corner of the lot. Um, all in all, even factoring in those two new features. There'd be a net reduction of total sign square footage from what is existing. Which is a hundred and three point oh-five square feet. And what would be proposed is a hundred and two point nine eight. So it's basically the same, but slightly less. Uh, there are no other modifications, um, requested. Uh, so that's kind of it, my end of the presentation. Certainly, obviously, we'll answer any questions that might be asked, um. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is, is introduce Sean Donovan from Viewpoint, um, and have him kind of walk through, uh, the signs themselves.
Sounds good. And Michael, welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
And, uh, Mike, you want, you want to share the screen? I'll walk, we'll walk through, uh.
Yep, let me see what I can do here. I'm going to have to close a couple of things out. Give me one second, please. Okay.
The board members, while he's doing that, we did receive correspondence from other boards, the Concom, not in their jurisdiction. BPW had no comments. Our chief had no objections, so just for the record. We did receive their correspondence.
Is that, uh, sharing, Mr. Chairman?
It is.
All right, so it might be not in the, in the exact order, Sean, but it's the best I can do, uh.
Sure, no problem. All right, well, right, right there, this particular page right here is the existing pylon sign. Is going to be refaced. The structure is going to remain the same. And you see the Dunkin' Donuts face with drive-through. It's just going to be rebranded with a sim- similar polyface. And it would just say Dunkin' Drive Through. And then what you see in the lower portion are two awning frames. I believe, uh, when this store first transferred over, that was an additional tenant sign of some sort. And so these awnings create a little bit of downlighting from inside the cabinet. So it was a multi-tenant cabinet that those recovers of the awning wo- would take care of that. That's all those are. And there's no branding on the awning. So it's just the reface of the, uh, of the existing pylon sign. And we would paint it dark gray instead of the current brown that it's at now.
Sorry, I'm trying to move along here, but have a little.
Jim, is this out of the overlay district?
Um, yes, it's not, it's not in the overlay.
Okay.
I have, I, I have a bunch of questions, but quite frankly, bottom line here, just so everybody knows ahead of time. They're allowed a hundred and fifty feet. By my calculation, anyway.
Yeah, sorry, this is painful, but there's the next slide.
All right, so this is, this is an additional sign. So currently there are two, two wall signs existing. And they are internally illuminated sign cabinets. And they are at thirty-five point four square feet each. So on the front elevation, the side elevation, those wall signs will be replaced by Dunkin' Donuts. This here proposal is the Wakefield runs on Dunkin'. This is on the drive-through side. So this here would not be seen from the public way, but it's more kind of the idea of a, more about the customer experience. Uh, ties the community in with the brand. So, and this would be a new sign, but. With the new sizes and so forth, we're still under on the square footage of the building signs. So this is new, but again, you don't, you'd only see it if you're in the drive-through lane. It wouldn't be a, something you would see from the public. Once again, more, more about the, the customer experience relating to the, you know, the community to the, you know, to the brand.
So for the purpose of the board to understand, they can have this sign. Pointing towards the parking lot. And it doesn't have to be, since the parking lot may be owned by the current owner. It's not part of the project lot for this building. But at the same time, the way it is written, they can have a sign towards that parking lot. The current, the overlay district would say it has to be part of your property. In this case. Under the old code, it does not. Now, the only thing to consider here is half of the sign is probably approximately. Pointing towards the yard of the butter. The other half, half is, is towards the parking lot. No dimension basically as to how. Um, property-wise, this breaks out. But it appears that's the way it works. And it's not going to, in my opinion, it's not going to be as much seen by the drive-through because your eyes are at window height. They're not looking up. And this is up. Above your car level.
And when you say half will be seen. You mean almost like the E. To, and to the left will be towards the yard and the F to the D will be towards the parking lot. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, that's, that's what appears to be basically based on this, this, uh, distance between the two.
Yeah.
A pickup, pickup space. And it looks like there are trees, bushes or fencing basically at that abutting property.
Yeah.
It may block this.
Can I move on?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so this is the side elevation. And it's also where the entrance is. So this is when you're inside their parking lot. And currently what's existing there is a fifty-one by one hundred inch, thirty-five point four square foot internal illuminated wall sign. That wall sign, that sign would go away. The GC would be building up a new monolith. And then these Duncan channel letters would replace that sign. So the existing sign there is thirty-five point four. The box around these channel letters proposed is twenty-three point five square feet, so it's less. The white area you see behind that, that would be fascia board provided by the GC and part of the building.
So, on this one. They can have a sign towards their parking lot. Which is like the other side basically, but a little bit different. What's happened here, we have to recognize, and you can look at the existing photograph before. They've raised the edge of this parapet up. Probably three times the amount that it currently exists. At that entry area. The problem with that is. That the Duncan sign can't be any higher. Than thirty-six inches off the roof. We have no information as to where the roof elevation is to the top of the lettering. Just to let you know.
So where does this now, like this moves up and we just, this was all done before that apartment building was built next door. Right? So is this? Height level, well, how does that equate to the apartments that are, that were just built there?
It has no bearing.
No.
No, this is strictly. This is strictly an ornament basically to act as a basically a billboard and of, of sorts. Uh, no different than, uh, what McDonald's down the street, what they did there. It's just that the sign cannot be any more than three feet off the roof plane.
All right, so Sean, why is it going up? Why do we have to go up?
To do with the sign, it's more the architect's, uh, design of the exterior, the building. And, and it comes up a lot. Uh, so what we could do is we could go back to our client and the architect. And see if they can bring that model it down. That's really, that's, that's the simplest of answers. You know, the, if you're looking at the building fascia right there. We have that parapet roof and then what I'm going to call like that half-round monolith where the sign cabinet is now. They're just building it up and it's a brand aesthetic. It's just, it's, it's common with all the other Dunkin' Donuts. It's just. You know, the design that they're going forward with. Uh, but it does, you know, there are communities that have, uh, you know, rules in, in place where the signs can't go above a roof line. So what we would do is we would have the architect just bring the drawings down and that would bring the sign panel lower. Because that's it, si- simply we're proposing the sign on the plans, uh, of the elevated building.
But Sean, just so you know, in the overlay district, you're absolutely right. That sign couldn't be above the roof line. And the, under the overall, uh, ru- regulations, it says three feet. That's it. So it may be that where you place the sign may be within that three-foot corridor. But you can't tell us right now whether it is or isn't because you're not the architect. So. Uh, but you're right, if, if you were to lower that and get it within that three-foot, um. Uh, criteria, then you'd be fine.
Is this sign very bright in its own twenty-four hours that somebody's apartment, they can see this sign like lit up? Uh, all day, every day?
It's, it's modest brightness. Uh, I mean, the, these are internal lit ch- channelers, they're pretty common. They, they shouldn't be too overbearing. Uh. But i- it's, uh. And as far as them being on, most franchisees turn the signs off when the business closes in the evening.
They're, they're, but they've also got in previous decisions, they have a timeframe set already in those past decisions.
Yeah, they would comply with that.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to move on?
Yep. Can you just switch tabs, Michael, instead of stop sharing each time? You can't switch.
I might be able to, yeah, let me see, I'm not there.
It just looked like you had all the pages open there and just clicking on the tabs.
That I can do, Dave.
Save us all some time.
Save me some pain too.
So I was doing, we'd be doing this.
All right, so that's that. Right, so we talked about this one or do you need to talk about this one?
Yeah, this is the same thing, very similar. This is the, this is the front of the building that faces the road. Same, same scenario, existing sign cabinet that comes in at, uh, thirty-five point four square feet. The channel is committed twenty-three point five. And I would imagine it's the same issue, Jim. You know, we'd, we'd have to kind of bring, bring them down.
It is the same issue basically in both cases, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Like sign for sign. All right, so this, we talked about this earlier. This is the actual thing.
Yeah, just stay with this for a moment. Just understand. Because you've changed the color of that canopy, that becomes the whole sign because it's a corporate color. So, but even if we were to count this, the whole of that sign on that post. It probably wouldn't exceed, I, I'm almost sure it would not exceed what you're allowed. But understand, we need to understand that what you filed for is just the replacement. that what you filed for is just the replacement of the inlay, when in fact, it's the whole, because of that corporate color, you basically have given that whole top end as a sign, frame, canopy, and, and the sign element basically become all one because of the corporate color. But again, it won't, I doubt whether it exceeded the hundred and fifty you're allowed.
Yeah, so as far as like, so, so on the square footage, how should we post that then? We do, we have to include the whole cabinet, the?
Yep, yep. And, and the, and the canopy, basically, that's part of it. Unless you were to go back to gray, which I imagine corporation wouldn't want.
No, it, it would go gray, because, because the color scheme changes. Uh, the last round had brown in, in the image. And that, that brown has been eliminated. So the gray is, just brings it up to the, uh, you know, the modern image. We can, yeah, the, we can have the total square footage, so you're, you're, you know, you're looking at the, you know what you're looking at.
Yeah.
All right, and now these here exit signs, again, if you look down, you'll see there's existing exit signs, enter, exit. And these new cabinets are just a more modern version. They're LED, a sleeker look, and it's just a brand requirement to, you know, represent this image.
And these, these are fine by the code.
Those existing would be dug up, did use the same power source.
I think we're covered it. Up in the, uh, canopy.
The, the clearance bar, that was the only other one that, that is kind of a tricky one. We're considering a new sign. Have you got that one, Mike?
Yeah, I'll call it up. See, I thought I had it.
It's directional signage.
Yeah, the, the clearance bar, we kind of look at that, is it, it could be wayfinding, directional safety. There is. But because we provide it as a sign company, we include it in our permitting packages, because it's something where we're manufacturing. And it does have the word drive-through on it. So it's kind of one of those gray areas. It, it's an additional sign, or does it fall under safety, wayfinding? Uh, you know, we have to.
I, I just, I, I put it under basically directional. And, and it, it doesn't, it doesn't cause this thing to go anywhere as far as numbers are concerned. It's fine.
So that actually, we, and I include that in the square footage calculation, so we it helps us a little.
Okay.
That's basically it in terms of the signage.
Any other comments or question, board members?
I'm, if I could add something, Mr. Jim, it sounds, to Jim's point on the no greater than thirty-six inches. If the board were inclined to allow the, the sign, uh, changes, modifications, it could be a condition that, um, those two signs and the parapet and the other one facing the southerly side, the access parking lot, uh, be no greater than thirty-six inches above the roof line. That might prevent us from having to, um, take the board's time up at the next hearing, but whatever the board's pleasure.
The top of the signs.
Top of the signs. Got it.
Um, again, we, you just heard us go back and forth on this. Approving with a condition versus seeing what we're getting at the next hearing and being a quick, you know, head nod and vote potentially. So front entrance, we need a clarity on that. The canopy, gonna add that to the calculation, the awning to the calculations. I think we'd like to see board members, the final calculations, would we not? Just to know that we're under, Jim, you keep artic, saying we're probably not, probably not, but they're the applicant. They should show all the signs with the calculations. And if they want to run them by you in advance to see if they've calculated things correctly, I'm fine with that if you are, but I think we want to see the total and just make sure they're, they're under and they don't need some other variance or something, right? Michael, would you apply for, does the permit?
Sorry?
You just applied for the modification to the permit.
Modifications to the, to the, to the, um, to the previous relief, right, which allowed the signs.
Right, but what would trigger, like if now you want to modify the signs, but you wanted to do so much more that it, it, you know, triggered some variance need or something, right? Because the signs are too big. Or go over a certain threshold, right, Jim? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
That's all I'm thinking. I just, again.
No, we're, we're fine, we're fine with, um, with showing the, the modific, the, um, the additional information. Uh, making sure that the top of the sign is not thirty-six, showing that, um, as a modified plan and coming back, uh, next, next hearing, no problem at all.
Since, since, since that, since the code has not changed from the time the signage was originally approved for this, um, is, I mean, and, and normally what would happen if they changed the signs, then they'd have to come up to compliance to the current code. But coming up to compliance for the current code would be coming up to this compliance of the current code that it was under anyway. So the only thing we need is corrective information on square footage. But as I've noted, I doubt very much it's going to go over the one fifty that's allowed on this site. We just need a record of it. And if someone wants to send me something so I can check, because I've done a memo with all the calculations and all the sections, like already, Dave has a copy of it. I will just update it with that approach, a double track check.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that.
We can put the square footage, we can put the, the height and everything out, and I'll, and I'll scale it out on the plan as to where it is. And, uh, yeah, I can give you that actual height. Like, like you said, Jim, I don't, I don't think it exceeds the thirty-six, because it, I mean, it's a two-foot-high letter. Visibly, it looks like it matches the line. But we can call it out on the drawing.
Well, I, I would ask that you get back to the architect and confirm where the roof is in relationship with what they're gonna do. And at the same time, dimensionally, just to remind people later when they're doing construction, dimensionally show roof line versus top of lettering at thirty-six max.
Yep, we can do that.
All right, that sounds, that sounds good. So Jim, thank you for, um, for offering to let us run it by you in advance of the hearing. Be happy to do that.
Okay, anything else, board members? Before I open it up?
Oh, is this a here, or a other matter?
This is a new hearing.
Yeah.
A minor modification, or a modification to an existing special permit.
Yeah, we didn't file as minor. It's full numbers.
Like, like we did the other Duncan.
Right.
That's what they did. All right, public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand at this time in the Zoom meeting. Saying no hands will close the public testimony.
I move that we continue this to July twelfth.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, um, thanks for the updates. Um, again, hopefully we can, we can come back in two weeks and it'll be quick, hopefully. But I appreciate the questions. All right.
Thank you, and happy full. All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, item five, clerk and board comments. Anything for tonight? Okay, item six, approval of minutes of June fourteen.
I move that we approve the minutes of June fourteen.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Well, actually, everyone votes on the minutes. Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
Listen to me.
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes. Well done, Gail.
Thank you.
All those continuances.
They were really hard to do, yeah.
No, it still makes the document ten pages, right?
I know.
Um, okay.
So, do we vote on new chair at this meeting?
I'd love to, but I think. It's a July meeting, and, um, we'll see how, how busy the agenda is, but we'll get to it.
All right. The July meeting, or can we do it now? I thought it was this hearing. Does it have to be the July meeting?
Hmm. Does it have to be on the agenda? I don't think so.
It will not be at the July meeting. I thought we did notice it. I mean, it's part of the rules that we do it every year, and it usually is under other matters. But, um, not the legal notice per se, but under other matters. Uh, I would not have a problem if that were to commence at this time.
Who's not gonna be here at the next meeting?
Mike Feely, Mickey Feely.
So we're all here. So it'd be my feeling, Dave, that we should do it.
Yeah, if you have notice issues, you could at least talk about it and then get a con, I don't know, consensus and then do it at the beginning of the next meeting even. Formalize it at the beginning of next meeting.
Well, if we're gonna do it, it doesn't take too long typically.
No, yeah, yeah.
Board members want to proceed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
God knows what next meeting could be.
Yeah.
I don't want to do it at midnight, that's for sure.
I nominate, I nominate.
I might do, I might do something crazy like renominate you.
I nominate Lu, Tom Lucy.
For what?
For chair, for chair of the.
Tom, do you accept that nomination?
Sure. Sure. That's not very enthusiastic.
Of course. I want to rethink this one.
Any, any other nominations for chair? All right. Um, do the clerk and then vote on both, or vote on them one at a time?
I'd say vote one, one at a time.
All right, so the, the, uh.
I also say, and I, Dave, I don't know if we need to vote this. But if, since you are not running again and Tom is running, it's pretty simple unless we have a write-in candidate that, uh, this is gonna happen. I would just ask that you continue to chair whatever, whatever, um, cases are currently open and that Tom chaired the new cases.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, 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 these continued hearings could go on for six more months.
But you're still gonna be here.
You're here.
I'd be here and I'd be a voting member. I'm just not banging the Zoom gavel.
All right, that's fine. Then as long as you mentor Tom to make sure that we do everything right and you give him all your notes.
There'll be a, there'll be a mind meld, for sure.
He hasn't, yeah, boxes are in the, the car already to drop off.
They're already at the front door.
Yeah, growing at thirty miles an hour.
All right, so the nominee for chair is, uh, Tom Lucy. Uh, all in favor, Chip Fairbill?
Yes.
Jim McBame?
Yes.
Joe Pride?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, Tom, you've accepted the nomination.
Yeah, with a deep appreciation for all the work you've done as chair, Dave, over all these last years.
Thank you.
That's a caveat that you finish up the other meetings.
You've been chair.
Since two thousand and fourteen, oh, nine years.
Yeah.
Took over for the steam, Michael Pierce.
You have, you have done it a, a yeoman's job, so thank you. You've made our lives easier.
I appreciate that.
Big shoes of help, Tom.
He's done a great job herding the cats on this committee, for sure.
Yeah. Rails, rails.
You're a newbie to this, uh, whole zoning board thing, too. Dave has been a great mentor to someone to listen to and and, and learn from. So, yeah, I appreciate, although I've only been on for five or so of your nine years. I appreciate all of your service.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, it's been an honor, and let me tell you, Gail, you know, she'll, she'll keep you, she'll keep you on it. She'll keep you on it.
Chop, chop.
Yeah, but the deliveries of, of files, it's a little longer drive, unfortunately, Gail, so.
I know.
You, Tom, have to work out a system.
Hey, maybe going back.
Oh, you're thinking of from her house. Tom's a shorter ride from down home.
No, no, but when we're exchanging the files before and after meetings, it's literally like a drop-off around the corner.
Right, right.
Um, but, um, anyway, we do have a clerk. Um, any nominations for the clerk position?
Joe Pride.
Joe, do you accept this nomination?
I accept. I'll keep it running.
All right, any other nominations? All right, so nominee for, uh, clerk is Tom, is Joe Pride, uh, voting members, Chip?
Why are you running this? Don't we have a new chair? Are you said you want that right or whenever? I, I say yes.
July twelfth, effective July twelfth. Well, I can finish this one. All right, um, so nominating Joe Pride, Chip, you said yay?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Welcome back, Joe. Bang of job. All right.
I do gotta.
No, I don't, this has happened. You know that if Tom isn't around, you run the meetings, right?
I know that, yeah. Dave, Chip, Dave, uh, skipped out the very first time he became, uh, clerk.
Oh, that's right, when he became, went to a RUBR or something.
Yeah, he went to a RUBR a week later.
Uh, yes, yeah, because we don't have a vice, we could have a vice chair. The bylaws, the state law statute does contemplate that we could have a vice chair, um, amongst our membership, and they would run them. We've just defaulted to the clerk position, but really could be any other active member, but, but I think Amy did it when she was clerk a couple of times and Joe was in it, so.
And, and actually, Jim did it when he wasn't, when the clerk, when Amy wasn't around, so.
Yeah.
I think anybody can do it, right?
Any regular member could be, yes.
But, you know, we haven't, we haven't ever given him the laser. The memorial laser.
No.
Thank God.
I think it's important to note that, um, during your tenure, we went through the, um, the worst pandemic in the history of the country. It's, it's pretty impressive.
Yep.
Transition from in-person to Zoom to, uh, I, I just think that's amazing. What you've done, and it's not, it's not easy, and it's a different, uh, it's a different experience than it used to be, and for you to be able to transition and do what you've done is just amazing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
I look forward to getting back together on a regular basis. I don't know when that's gonna happen.
I think it's coming sooner rather than later. I think this fall.
Oh, that'd be great. And it's potentially in the public building, in the public.
Public safety building.
We have to, to make the public safety building Zoom accessible.
Yeah. But how it'll all work, like I'd still probably, the chair would probably still have to have a laptop to interface with people who are, you know, remote and that kind of thing. So we'll have to figure out the logistics and
I think it's.
Training on it, but.
I think it's gonna be set up very easily.
Yeah. But looking forward to being in the same room together and having easels and all of that old-fashioned stuff. So. All right, till then, um.
I got one, I have one formal, formal comment to make for everybody. You can think about this for the next few years. I am not re-upping come twenty twenty-five. So you have to find, you'll have to find another architect or somebody.
We have one.
We have one.
You've already been replaced.
Listen to me, you'll be stepping into that.
She needs to get broken in.
You'll have to do a mind meld with her, too. Did all your years, but, um, there's time for that. But thanks, Jim, for that, so. Any other topics for tonight, folks? Otherwise.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Goodness, no. All in favor?
Yes.
Bye.
Bye. All right, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.